Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council Meeting of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, May the 7th, 2019. We welcome you here this evening. And as we normally do, as we get started, we will just a minute rise for a moment of silence and will remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance. And as we go to this time of silence, we would like to remember Officer Jordan Sheldon of the Morseville Police Department who was killed in action this past week. And I know that I've talked with and sent prayers to our mayor in Morseville and others about this. A good friend, I know Mayor Atkins, and I know they're really having a hard time with it down there. So please keep that family in your thoughts and prayers and please also keep our police officers in your thoughts and prayers and all of our employees as we go through this time. So if you would please rise, join in a moment of silence and a Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. We salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we go to our special recognitions we have tonight, I would like to make a mention a few things that have gone on over the last few days. Say thank you to our Lenore Police Department and their take-a-kid fishing that they did. I understand that was a great event and we appreciate that. And I know the kids had a great time. And also our Citizens Police Academy. And again, another very successful police academy, I understand. And we appreciate all those who were part of it and took that. I know several of our council members have gone through the police academy, so we appreciate that. Also, our charters of freedom are being worked on as we speak. The Masonry Departments from South Colwell, West Colwell, and Hydrite were out today and started the brickwork on it and they look great. So this is the first project that has had the schools involvement into it. So we're excited to be a part of this pioneering program with them doing it. They were all excited and really enjoyed it, I think, very much being a part. They'll be back again tomorrow as they work on the other sections of it, but they got most of the middle finished up today when I was up there. So it really is really looking good. And also, we want to say congratulations to our Finance Department and receiving the special comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year of 2018 and the Certificate of Achievement. And Donna Bean, thank you, and your staff for all the hard work on that. And we appreciate it. I don't know how many years in a row.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight years in a row, so that's great. So that's a lot to keep up with now. You can't miss one. So prayers are on every year. So anyway, but congratulations. We appreciate the hard work on that as we go. So now we'll join some special recognitions. Go down here.
Chief?
I'm good. Our first one is a special recognition we presented to our chief, Brent Phelps, the chief of the Police Department, proclaiming the month of May as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month throughout the City of Lenore and Colwell County. And I'll present this to you as we read. Whereas the growth in popularity of motorcycle riding and touring combined with the many scenic destinations in our state and the year-long riding season have led to North Carolina having one of the largest populations of motorcycle enthusiasts in the nation. That's true, because I know a whole bunch of them. And whereas more and more residents of the City of Lenore are taking up this mode of transportation to commute to and from their places of employment. And whereas many motorists undergo specialized training by attending professionally taught motorcycle operator training courses with emphasis on skills, traffic laws, and proper safety equipment. And whereas it is the responsibility of all motorists to be aware of the motorcycles and to extend to them the same courtesy as any other vehicles on our roadways. Now therefore, it be resolved that I, as mayor of the city, and on behalf of the Lenore City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month throughout the City of Lenore. This the first day of May 2019. And we appreciate it, even though we're past the first of May, but that's okay. Chief, thank you. We appreciate what you do and the protection that you afford all of our citizens and especially those who take it upon them to ride motorcycles. We want them to be safe. Thank you very much.
We're picturing. And we're going to ask everybody that we present to come back and we're going to do a large picture with everybody together.
All right. One, two, three.
All right. Thank you, sir. I think you're here again for this one also. And this proclamation is in recognition of Peace Officers Memorial Week, which is May the 12th through the 18th, 2019. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the Lenore Police Department play an essential role in the safeguarding the rights and freedoms of those inside the City of Lenore. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the law enforcement agency of the Lenore Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, it be resolved that I, as mayor of the City of Lenore, and on behalf of the Lenore City Council, do hereby proclaim and call upon all citizens of Lenore and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 12th through May 18th, 2019 as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in so doing have established for themselves an inevitable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Furthermore, I proclaim and call upon the citizens of the City of Lenore to observe May 15th, 2019 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. Let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes, witnessed this day of May 2019. Chief, thank you for that. Thank you for all you do and you protect us. There we go. We appreciate it.
Just shoot this one and then we'll do.
With this one, I'd just say thank you from the council. Mr. Mayor, it is becoming harder and harder to find people that are willing to serve others before they serve theirself. And we are very fortunate. I wish I could have every one of my staff folks to come and have you present it to each one of them. I get to go to meetings and hang out with very nice individuals and a lot of times I don't deal with the conflicts that they have to deal with day in and day out. And they are the ones out in the heat, in the cold, during the week, on the weekends. And so, thank you for the recognition.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Okay, I'll ask our Director of Public Utilities, Radford Thomas, if he'll come up and join me as we proclaim in celebration of what we all love, Drinking Water Week. Bring a cup of water over here. You can take a drink before we start. Proclamation in celebration of Drinking Water Week. Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource. And whereas only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas any measure of a successful society, low morality rates, economic growth, and diversity, productivity, and public safety are in some way related to access to safe water. And whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which future generations depend. And whereas each citizen of the City of Lenore and Colwell County is called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution, to protect water conservation, excuse me, to practice water conservation, and to get involved in local water issues by getting to know their water. Now therefore, it be resolved that by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor and on behalf of the Lenore City Council, I do hereby proclaim the week of May 5th through May 11th, 2019 as Celebrate Drinking Water Week throughout the City of Lenore and Colwell County. Witness hand and calls to seal the City of Lenore to be affixed this the 7th day of May 2019. Radford, thank you, sir. Appreciate you giving us good drinking water every day.
We do our best.
I know you do. We appreciate that. Let's get a picture. I appreciate something. He did the same thing last year. He did. Got you. Dirty water. First. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. As I say all the time, we have a crew of folks working day and night, doing everything they can to assure that we have safe drinking water in Lenore and Colwell County. We provide water to about 55,000 people in this county every day through our sales agreements and various partners. And it's something that we take very seriously from the water treatment as well as the wastewater treatment and that affects, the effects that that has as well, and down to our maintenance crews. It's about reliability. It's about being safe. And they work hard every day and I appreciate all that they do and appreciate all the council does to give us the resources that we need to get this job done. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you very much. Get your water. I saluted with a drink.
And I'll ask our Public Works Director, Jared Wright, if he'll come up and join me for our next. All these good things happening at the same month of May, don't we? This is a proclamation for National Public Works Week. Whereas public works, infrastructure, facilities, and services are of vital importance to the health, safety, and well-being of the people of this nation. And whereas such facilities and service should not, could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, engineers, and administrators representing federal, state, and local units of government who are responsible for and must design, build, operate, and maintain the transportation and refuse disposal systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to serve our citizens. And whereas public works professionals provide critical response capabilities, experience, and support to all levels of government in times of natural and man-made disasters. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens and civic leaders of this country to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest in the public works needs and programs of the respective communities. Now therefore, as I, as mayor and on behalf of Lenore City Council, urge all citizens to join with representatives of governmental agencies and the American Public Works Association in proclaiming the week of May 19th through May 25th, 2019 as National Public Works Week in activities and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, and administrators and to recognize the substantial contributions they have made to our national health and welfare. This, we have set our hand to seal on the 7th day of May 2019. Jared?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate all you do and all your staff does. Your guys, without you, as we always say, you guys are the glue that keeps everything else together. So we appreciate it very much.
Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, Mr. Hillbrow, I do want to take an opportunity to say thank you for your endorsement of Public Works Week and thank you for your support of our department. We have an outstanding group of men and women that take pride in the services that we offer. So thank you for recognizing National Public Works Week. And I look forward to participating in some activities to spotlight the services that they provide during that week. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you will, Chief, Radford, Jared, and council, come down. We're going to shoot a picture with everybody together.
I used to do it, so you got to do it. Are you going to do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
We sent your photo back.
I can't. Except being good at labels. There you go. All right. One, two, three. Yep. All right. Thank you. Congratulations.
Water back.
All these proclamations are great.
That's what we make here.
Which one was it in?
You can tell the one.
Water. By the way, I should have said mortality, not morality, by the way. Just so we get the right wording in that.
And it's an enviable position, not an inevitable position.
Whatever. Hey, when you read 40, when you do 40s in a town, that's what happens.
Our mayor, Norm Crosby.
Too late now, so there.
I wouldn't want to read them all, that's for sure.
No, I wouldn't either.
Okay. If I didn't do that, we wouldn't have anything to laugh about. So you know, that's the way it is.
And we appreciate it.
Okay, we'll move on then. We do not have matters scheduled for public hearing this evening, so we'll move to our consent agenda items, which consist of minutes of the City Council Meeting of Tuesday, April 16th, 2019. Item B are minutes from the committee, the whole meeting of Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019. Item C is the capital project budget ordinance. This is a closeout of the 2016 Community Development Block Grant. This is for approval of a capital project budget ordinance to close out the 2016 Community Development Block Grant Capital Project in the amount of $140,272 as funds have been expended. And item D is an amendment to the 2017 Capital Project Budget Ordinance. This is also for approval of an amendment of the 2017 Capital Project Budget Ordinance as recommended by city staff. The amendments are as follows. Reduce clearance, spot slum, and blight at $13,347. Number two, increase public facilities funds for the J.E. Brawhill Park in the amount of $13,347. The amount of the 2017 Capital Project Budget Ordinance is $131,683. Item E is a capital project budget ordinance for an EPA Brownfield Grant. Approval of this would be for a capital project budget ordinance in the amount of $300,000 for the Environmental Protection Agenda EPA and Brownfield Grant. Excuse me, Agency Protection Agency of the EPA Brownfield Grant. Item F is the capital project budget ordinance for the ARC Grant. This will be approval of a capital project budget ordinance in the amount of $768,000 for the Appalachian Regional Commission ARC project. So that's items A through F. If there's anyone who would like to discuss any of those or make a motion concerning those items, please do so.
Lots of great projects.
Yes, it is.
I'll make a motion when you approve consent agenda items as presented.
Okay, we have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Willis to approve the consent agenda items A through F as presented. No other discussions. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Okay, as you know, it's a... Okay, we'll move on then. We do not, oh, this is a time on our agenda for requests and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone who would like to address the council, this is the time to do so. And, guy, welcome. Glad to have you this evening. Most everyone else, I believe, are our staff, so seeing no one. We'll move on to reports and boards of commissions. And tonight, we have the Honorable Rick Oxford, the Plan Administrator from the Western Piedmont Council of Governments, who will hold the second of two public meetings to receive public comments regarding the proposed FY 2019 Action Plan of the City of Lenore and the Uniform Home Consortium as part of the five-year consolidated plan. This plan is required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, outlines goals and actions, plans of the City of Lenore and the Uniform Home Consortium, and its use of Community Development Block Grant, CBDG, and home funds for fiscal year 2019, beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020. The City of Lenore serves as the lead entity for the Uniform Consortium. Rick, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. We are here for our second public meeting in order to submit the city's action plan for CDBG and for the home program. And this year, the city is going to receive FY 2019 funding in the amount of, for CDBG, $135,877. And for the home program, $1,102,000. So, the, start with the City of Lenore. Total funding, $135,877. Public facilities, we're budgeting $108,702 for renovations at the old Lenore High School complex, which includes the gym, the auditorium, and Max Cook Stadium. The remainder would be program administration allowable 20%, $27,175. CDBG.
Any questions?
Any questions?
TJ, is there anything you'd like to say?
Yeah.
Never mind.
I serve as city attorney.
I think I like this.
It took you 15 years to get this.
It's been longer than that. How long have you been here?
Fifteen, this is the 16th one of these you've come for.
Okay, it's taken me 15 years. You're right. Okay, no questions? I'll move on to the home program. The City of Lenore serves as the lead entity for the home program, which is a, the Uniform Consortium Home Program. It covers Alexander Burke, Colwell, and Catawba County and includes all 28 local governments in the four-county area. So, the city for FY 2019 will receive $1,102,000. We're anticipating program income of $350,000. And we get the program income from where we have, we've made loans to multifamily housing developers. We've also made some loans to CHODOS, Community Housing Development Organizations, which would be Habitat for Humanities. So when we make a loan, they pay the program back. And as the program receives money, it becomes program income and is recycled again. So...
In addition to this year's...
I'm sorry?
In addition to this year's money?
Yes.
For those budgets you're speaking of?
Yes, every year, every year. As we receive money, it's just recycled.
Okay.
So, that brings our total projected resources to $1,452,000. And with that, we do the Down Payment Assistance Program, which is a four-county-wide program. And this year, we're making some changes to it. We're upping our assistance, which in the past has been $5,000, up to $5,000 for existing homes, and up to $7,500 for new construction. Sort of gap financing. So we're upping that to a max of $15,000 for new construction and $10,000 for existing construction. And those funds can be used as down payment and/or closing costs toward the purchase of a home for an applicant that is at or below 80% of the area median income. So it's a boost into homeownership. And to qualify, they have to, they have to have $500 as down payment, some, $500 that they bring to the table, some skin in the game. They have to be creditworthy where they can acquire financing for the bulk of the money through one of our local participating lenders.
Rick, let me ask you a question.
Sure.
What position are you in the financing of this? What, the lender's going to take first position?
It's going to take first. We'll take a second.
Okay. Do you have any delinquency or default numbers on that?
It's, usually, they sell it.
Okay.
We've had a couple defaults, you know, where they went into foreclosure. But that's very rare.
Okay, that's good to hear.
You know, when there was that sort of glut of foreclosures, yeah, we had some then, but now, you know, we don't. Because there's such a need, a demand for housing, so, you know, if they can't afford it, and all they got to do is put a "for sale" sign down, and they'll sell, you know?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So to date, we've done about, somewhere around 3,000 down payment assistance throughout the four-county area, with a good quarter of that going into Colwell County.
Okay.
So we're budgeting, as we were saying, you know, the supply is down, demand is up. So our numbers have sort of, you know, our number of applicants have sort of, they were slim January and February, but now they're really hitting us. So we're projecting that this year, we'll, with these funds, we still got money from last year, but with these funds, we could do 40, we're anticipating about 40. And we're budgeting $362,500 for that regional down payment assistance program. Then we're required to set aside 15% of the home monies for CHODOS, Community Housing Development Organizations, which again would be like habitats. And we're budgeting $165,300 for that. Then we fund multifamily housing projects. We make loans to the developers. And those developers are, they're trying to get low-income housing tax credits and funding from North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. It's a competitive process. So they come to us and they ask for a letter of commitment. And if they're funded, then we make them a loan. If they're not funded, we don't make them a loan. So we're budgeting $514,000 for that because we... money through one of our local participating lenders.
Rick, let me ask you a question.
Sure.
What position are you in the financing of this? What, the lender's gonna take first position?
It's gonna take first, we'll take a second.
Okay. Do you have any delinquency or default numbers on that?
It's, usually, they sell it.
Okay.
We've had a couple defaults, you know, where they went into foreclosure, but that's very rare.
Okay, that's good to hear.
You know, when there was that sort of glut of foreclosures, yeah, we had some then, but now, you know, we don't. Because there's such a need, a demand for housing, so, you know, if they can't afford it, and all they gotta do is, you know, put a for sale sign down, and they'll sell, you know?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, to date, we've done about, somewhere around 3,000 down payment assistance throughout the four county area, with a good quarter of that going into Caldwell County.
Okay.
So, we're budgeting, as we were saying, you know, the supply is down, demand is up. So, our numbers have sort of, you know, our number of applicants have sort of, they were slim, January and February, but now, they're really hitting us. So, we're, we're projecting that this year, we'll, with these funds, we still got money from last year, but with these funds, we could do 40, we're anticipating about 40. And we're budgeting $362,500 for that regional down payment assistance program. Then, we're required to set aside 15 percent of the home monies for CHODOS, Community Housing Development Organizations, which again, would be like habitats, and we're budgeting $165,300 for that. Then, we, we fund multifamily housing projects. We make loans to the developers, and those developers are, they're trying to get low-income housing tax credits and funding from North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. It's competitive process. So, they come to us and they ask for a letter of commitment. And if they're funded, then we make them a loan. If they're not funded, we don't make them a loan. So, we're budgeting $514,000 for that, because we've got that many people asking for funds, okay? And usually, those loans are $200,000 or $300,000. And those loans are usually a 2 percent loan over a 20-year term.
So, this will get us two or three of those projects within our, within the reach?
Yes, yes. And, and what that does, that serves as local commitment to those developers, which gives them points in the rating scale, okay? So, without that, they don't get those extra points, and with those extra points, they may get the funding, okay? Now, and we're also trying something new this year. We're budgeting $300,000 for new construction. This will be made available to the City of Hickory for the construction of two homes located on current city-owned properties in the southwest section of the city. They currently have about 11 lots there. And so, they came to us and they were proposing this idea. A similar idea has been done by Gastonia, so we went down and toured what they did. So, they want to build a home, they want to build two homes, and then sell them, and then build some more with those funds. And, so the homes will be sold to buyers who are at or below 80 percent of the area median income. This would be a pilot project that, if successful, would, or would, or could be duplicated in the City of Lenore, or at the City of Morganton, or... We've still working out the details, the contractual details of how the money will come back to the program, because it will become program income that will come back to the program.
What's the difference between that and the CHODO? I mean, I understand, but it's, there's...
Well, it's...
I mean, I know it's not a habitat, but it's, kind of its own...
It's a different, it's a different thing. It's a line item called new construction. The others is a line item called CHODO. But it, they can do the same thing, you know? CHODO is a nonprofit organization. City of Hickory does not want to use a nonprofit organization. They want to contract with a contractor, have them build the house, they own the land, they want to, they want to oversee it.
All the revenue comes back to the program and not to the City of Hickory?
Eventually, yes. We want to give them enough to do two, and then, if it can do two more, and then, but eventually, it will come back to the program. If the, if the house...
Just assistance on two, though.
I'm sorry?
You're not doing the entire construction loan, are you?
Doing two houses at $300,000.
Yeah, yeah. We're doing the bulk of it, yeah. They own the property.
$150,000.
Yeah. And, yeah.
So, basically, in the future, if we own the property, we could get $300,000, the City of Lenore could get $300,000 to build our own houses?
Yes.
So, every...
If we can make it, if we can make it work, okay?
If you can make it work.
Like I said, it is a pilot program.
This is a pilot, you model in Hickory there, right.
So, then, if every community asks for this, this is five, right? Five in our county?
Yeah.
Four, four counties, right?
Well, we can't fund everybody at one time.
Right.
Like, we don't fund all the CHODOs at one time, so, you know, you get in line. But we, we see it as, you know, Gastonia was using it as sort of an infill, you know, for, they had acquired properties, and the city's having to pay to mow it, and, you know, so, they was trying to use it to try to revitalize part of the neighborhood.
And how did it go?
It was very successful there, yeah.
So, we expect it to go well here.
And they used the home monies to do that.
And was this money for ground-up construction, not rehab?
Yes, ground-up, new construction.
Rick, if you say that you can't fund every city or every county, what qualifies Lenore for this project?
Well, Lenore is the lead entity, you know, and we have 28 members that, you know, that can receive funding. And these are, these are different activities that we can do. City of Hickory approached us, asked us if we could do that. And we, we thought, well, it sounds like a good idea, so let's give it a try.
Jenny, is this a good idea?
Yes. I'll go ahead and steer the way in.
Do we, we are? Are we next? Where do we sign?
Well, I'd say as the lead entity, you're probably in the driver's seat.
But Hickory's gotta go first.
But, well, Hickory make the mistakes.
I like, I like those guys, too, but I like us.
And do that Lenore, and, you know...
It's all different.
Probably, probably the large cities that would want to...
Anyway, it's interesting.
Attempt it.
That is interesting.
Maybe Morganton, yeah.
Could be.
Anyhow, and program administration, 10 percent of the home program, $110,200. That's the home program budget, which I need to, that's, that's the action plan, which is annual action plan to the five-year consolidated plan. So, I need it approved, so, I need you to approve me to submit it to HUD. And then, next year, we'll be doing an action plan within a brand-new five-year consolidated plan. I can't look for, I can't wait to do that.
Any other questions on, on Rick before we...
Rick, you have to present this in all the major, right, in all the counties, right? You have to do this in all the counties?
I do it here, you're the lead entity.
So, no, they're not gonna know about it. We don't tell the rest, you tell.
We're not gonna tell the rest of them.
That's right.
I just, I always wanted to know the feedback on the other, what the other folks said about that.
Ike, you get ready to ask a question? I see your head.
I'll get started, I'm done, I'm good.
Okay, you sure?
I've got a whole lot of questions.
I'm a little conflicted on cities getting into the development business.
And that's where, that's where I...
I would say there's some concerns to that, I mean, I guess we'll see how it, how it goes.
Because, I mean, there's, there's city after city after city that would love to have $300,000.
We suggested that they do it through a CHODO, but they did not want to.
Right. So, like, we have a habitat.
You might could.
And that, and Habitat builds brand-new houses every, how many a year?
I don't know how many they build.
One or two, a couple a year?
No, they do...
They built that whole neighborhood last year.
Five or six.
Yeah, five or six.
And I think ours, Rick can correct me, but I think the Habitat of Caldwell County is more active than the other areas.
It is.
Very active.
They produce more.
So, if Hickory builds two homes with that $300,000...
They do. No, well, I'm sorry.
Two homes.
I'm sorry, I, I was thinking, I was talking about the...
So, those homes are gonna cost, those homes should be about $150,000.
Yes.
So, what is the median income level in Hickory? Because that's a fairly expensive house, if you've got to be below, 80 percent or below the median income.
That's two houses, they're right, that's 150 each, right?
150 each, yeah.
Median income's $150,000, that's a pretty good income.
What is the median income? What's the median income in Hickory, do you know?
For one person, it's $32,800.
So, they've got to make $28,000 or less a year to purchase that home?
No, no, I'm sorry. The 80 percent of the area median income is $30,800.
So, $32,000.
I think it's $32,800.
So, with an income of $32,000 a year...
That's for one person.
But that's what, that's what the purchaser would have to make, or less, to purchase that home, that's $150,000. Not sure they can make that mortgage paper, but is that net or gross?
Never be gross.
We're getting off track now, though.
Well, yeah. But, that would be, that'd be a substantial mortgage for a $32,000... That's why we're letting Hickory do it first. There you go. Have a blast, Hickory. Okay, any other questions on Rick, discussion?
What if we don't like that? What do we do? I mean, I'm just, what's the process? I'm just curious. Like, eh, I'm not saying I'm gonna vote no on this, but I'm just curious as to what the, what, how would we do? It's like, I don't like this plan. What would be the process? We change it?
I guess we tell Hickory you don't like it, you know, but...
I love Hickory, I love, I know those guys, and they're great. But if, if, if it was suggested to them to do, to go into their, their habitats, or their...
Through the CHODO.
Through the CHODOs.
Well...
Well, we have a great CHODO.
We do, and, but that might be the difference.
Well, and, but, why do we have to pay for their bad CHODOs? That gets us my question. If, we have great ones, and our guy's doing a good job, and those guys aren't doing a good job, then why do we need to supplement CHODOs doing not a good job?
Well, I think what they're asking for is the funding to do the project, regardless of whether, whether it's a CHODO or not, you know?
I don't have, you know, that's, those are just the things that are popping in my head, I was just wanting to make sure. And if it works there, then, you know, hopefully, maybe it can bring more.
Like I said, it is a pilot program.
Sure.
And that's what we'll try to do as our, some of the rings.
Okay, we need a motion to...
TJ, you're wearing off on me, brother. I make a motion that we approve the plan as presented.
Both plans, is that...
Both, both plans as presented.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Willis that we approve both plans as presented. This is our second meeting, so we're ready to do that. If no other discussion, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Carrie's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
I'll be back.
Appreciate working with the Western Piedmont Council of Governments.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on then to report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mayor, council, a couple items tonight for your information. The Lenore Business Advisory Board will meet on Thursday, May 9th, 6:00 p.m., third floor City Hall. The annual Cycle to Serve Rury Club event will be held on, in downtown Lenore on Saturday, May 11th, and that begins at 8:00 a.m. And the City-County Service Committee will meet on Monday, May 13th, 11:45 a.m. at the Community College. The Caldwell County Economic Development Commission will meet on Tuesday, May 14th, 8:00 a.m., and that'll be held at the Civic Center. And the North Carolina League of Municipalities will hold their annual city vision conference, and that'll be held on Tuesday, May 14th, and that runs through Thursday, and that's gonna be held at the Hickory Metro Convention Center. And that's all I have this evening. Unless you have questions.
Any questions? All right, we'll move on then to report and recommendations of our city attorney, Mr. Rohr.
Nothing to report, sir.
Thank you. We'll move on then to report the mayor, and I have several board reappointments to present to you tonight. We presented them in our last meeting. Would like to announce one before we go. Reverend Byron Grayson, I got a letter today after we had put him on that he is leaving Lenore. He will be moving to a new church in Gibsonville, North Carolina. So, he has submitted his resignation from the Lenore Business Advisory Board to me today, and, so anyway, we'll remove his name from the reappointment and open that, that seat will be open to, for someone else to fill, and we'll work on that. But the others, Dr. Dana Clark, Mr. John Moore, and Mr. Gray Shear, and Mrs. Glenda Wilson on the Lenore Business Advisory Board, and Mrs. Leah Hamilton on the planning board. I will present to you for reappointment to those boards. They're all, are doing good service and good work on those boards, and we appreciate their service to these boards, and hope that they will continue to do that. On that, we keep up with all our boards, watching how the attendance is, and are they being an active part of it. Get reports from all those who lead those boards, and so, we, we know exactly where everybody is, and these are all doing fine, so I would make that recommendation to you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept those recommendations and present them for nomination.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
With the exception of Reverend Grayson.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens makes a motion to accept the members of the Business Advisory Board and the Planning Board as presented. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. And we will announce that seat, that we have an open seat on our Business Advisory Board. Okay, report and recommendations, any of our council members? Anything to come up, discussion?
Caldwell's hiring, really well, yeah, sure, it was well-attended. How did the city do? Did we get some good candidates? I know we had a table. The City of Lenore do well at Caldwell's hiring? She got some, got some good ones. We had over 2,000, 2,000 jobs for about 500 people that showed up. Trying to get a lot more involved. The school system was a lot more heavily present there this time, which is great. So, I think as we continue to do, move forward, we're starting to see a lot more of our younger workforce kind of getting acclimated into that. So, it went, it went really well, so thank, yeah, thank you for reminding me.
Good. Also, I don't know that we've had a council meeting since our Gravity Games, I don't think, have we? Anyway, the North Carolina Gravity Games with Google and others went very well. Thank you, all of y'all, for everything you did. I know we had to reposition it from two weeks ago, or two weeks before, on April 13th to April 27th. The day was beautiful, everything really worked out really well for it. We didn't lose many teams, a few vendors to changes, but overall, it was a really great, successful event. We're always glad to partner with Google and UNC, Appalachian State, and others as we put this to work. And the fire department, that's right, won by a hair again.
Oh.
In the race between the police and the fire. Sorry, chief, we had to say that, you know?
We're gonna check your car.
I know. Run an inspection on them, we'll see how it's going. And we would say, commend Mayor Pro Tim, who spoke this morning at the CIS Graduates Breakfast. There, did a great job, as he always does, and shook hands with everybody in the room.
That's right, gotta learn how to do it.
See how their handshake was, so he did a great job with that, but...
Great, great, great group of kids, all those kids are getting ready to graduate, so I appreciate the invite, and thanks to Communities School, another great organization out there that helps these kids. And those kids have a tougher road to hoe than most of us have, and so, the fact that they were there, and they, it's, it's cool, cool to be in front of those guys.
It is, very much so. Great, great breakfast, and the great programs that we have in our high schools for the communities and schools, so we appreciate that. Are you gonna make this delegate report? Either way, I can, you can.
As I mentioned earlier, we have the League's Vision Conference takes place next week, and attending that will be the mayor, Mayor Pro Tim Ben Willis, council member Ike Perkins, and myself. And so, for voting delegates, we need to go back and designate a delegate, and also an alternate for that. And I'll leave that to council to make that decision.
Well, I think Ike Perkins would be this, he would be the man, look at, a man that dresses in a suit like that, that says delegate all over.
I delegate TJ.
I ain't going.
He's not going. So, yeah, I nominate Ike to be the delegate. You can't, can you do it?
I can, but you can do it if you want to.
No, I'm not, and the mayor to be the alternate.
Okay. You get to vote. All right, so we have, that council member Perkins will be the delegate, and I will serve as the guy if he doesn't show up.
I mean, you pick me up and carry me.
I gotta take you to the right, no, I gotta get you to the right spot. Do we need to vote on that? Is that officially...
You can, if you want to.
You wanna, well, we'll, just vote on it, so we'll make it official. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Say aye.
We appreciate that. Anything else to come before this illustrious body tonight? If not, we stand adjourned.